Okay, my clock just turned six thirty local your central time four thirty Pacific time. And I can see that we have a quorum of the city council of Hillsborough in the room. So I will call the meeting of the city council, city of Hillsborough to order. First item up on our agenda this evening is approval of our consent agenda. Uh, first item there is vouchers totaling two hundred and twenty eight thousand three hundred twenty one dollars fifty two cents. Did everyone receive copies of the vouchers? Any questions regarding the vouchers? And then we have minutes from our June four regular meeting. Did everyone receive copies of the minutes? Were there any questions or corrections to the minutes? Okay, then, uh, item three is a CDBG voucher pass through totaling two thousand dollars even. Everyone aware of that? And then finally, last but certainly not least in any way is the appointment of Terry Hagan to the planning commission as our, our, um, extraterritorial representative to the planning commission. Are there any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? Hearing none, that accept a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Councilman Wilkins moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman, councilman by seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries consent agendas approved. Next item is public comment. Do we have anybody, uh, either online or in the room that would care to address the council?
Doesn't appear so.
Okay. So we'll close out the first public comment set section and move straight into our business. And, uh, we have eight items there, so we'll try to get straight to it. The first item up is consideration of ordinance thirteen ninety five authorizing the issuance of series twenty twenty four general obligation bonds. Mr. Stiles?
Yes, sir. So you have kind of two things here, uh, for execution of this. Um, you have the ordinance which also authorized the issuance of bonds. And then you have, uh, the following resolution which prescribes the sale of the bonds. Uh, we had conducted the bond sale today and, uh, Greg Barnberg is here to kind of walk us through that process and kind of the results. And then, um, you'll have those two things for consideration. So.
Great.
That's great.
Perfect.
Greg, you can sit in my chair. It's okay.
Oh, no. I'm not calling for that. Appreciate the chance to be here and visit with you and share the results of the bond sale. And uh, for those of you that, that I've not had a chance to meet, um, I'm Greg Barnberg. I'm in the public finance department of Raymond James. Um, our public finance department works with cities, counties and schools on, on bond issues. And I've been very fortunate to work with the city of Hillsborough on bond issues for quite a few years. I've also been fortunate to work with the school district and Kansas Power Pool. So um, appreciate the chance to be here this evening and walk you through the results. Um, our role as a municipal advisor is really to guide you through the process to get everything ready for the sale. We work pretty closely with Andrew and his firm. Uh, they're preparing the legal documents and information for the sale, some of the publications. And so it's really a joint effort between our two firms to get the bond issue, uh, ready to be presented to, to underwriters and, and ultimately investors. And then once we have a successful sale like we did today, then it's our job to work closely with Triple Wolf to uh, finalize all of the, the paperwork, coordinate the closing, and then ultimately have the funds deposited in your bank account and ready to be spent on the project. So, um, the, when I think about the, the process you go through for, for selling a bond issue, obviously it starts with, you know, thinking about a project and there's a lot of interaction with your administration to help explore options of how do you finance this? Uh, what would it look like? And then once the city administration makes a decision that it's ready to move forward, from a council perspective, your first step is, uh, well, once you adopt a project resolution, that gives you the authority then to do a financing. But when the first step I think of in terms of, uh, completing the financing is that authorizing resolution and the authorizing resolution really does nothing more than, than give our firm, uh, give Andrew's firm permission to start working on the issue and, and go through that process of, um, where we can bring back final interest rates for your consideration. And that, that's what brings us here this evening. But this, uh, the approach we took on this bond issue is a little different. Um, in that that authorizing resolution, uh, oftentimes we'll, we'll move right into a public sale and, and get a bond rating and prepare a disclosure document and send that out to investors. But we took some time to explore what's called a direct placement first. And a direct placement is where we, instead of offering bonds in five thousand dollar increments to multiple investors, we go out to primarily banks, uh, that would buy the entire issue and get quotes, uh, from those banks to see if a direct placement would be favorable. Uh, typically you would get a slightly higher interest rate on a direct placement, but you avoid paying a lot of the, the cost of issuance or the fees. And so that's really what we wanted to explore. And it, this is a kind of the right size of an issue and, and the right repayment schedule. Uh, banks oftentimes, you know, like something that's ten years or less on their repayment schedule. Sometimes they'll struggle if it's a twenty or thirty year type issue to buy the entire issue themselves. Um, we went through that process. I'm glad we did. The bad news is we didn't have any bank interest and that, but it's not a reflection on the city. We're seeing a kind of a reduced, uh, level of interest overall from banks, not just in Kansas, but even nationwide. Uh, using their funds to, to make more loans now than they are buying securities. And uh, so we, we wanted to go through that process. Uh, we did, we didn't get any bids. And so immediately, um, even if we did get bids, we would still compare it to see if it would be better to take that direct placement option or proceed with a public offering. So once we completed that direct placement process, we then, uh, knew that we didn't have any bids. Uh, we rolled right into, we call a public offering. And so a public offering, um, for a competitive sale in this case is one where we advertise to potential underwriting firms or bidders to, that are buying your bonds that on a, a date and a time, which was today at ten o'clock, uh, will take sealed bids for the purchase of the issue. And in it, in, uh, Andrew's office sends out a notice of sale and publishes a, you know, a notification for the bidders. Uh, we then work closely with his office to prepare that prospectus, what we call it, an official statement. And so the official statement, we send out to bidders and it describes the bond issue, the city, the project has a lot of demographic information, tax collection, assessed valuation, any information that a bidder would like to see to get comfortable with investing in the, the city's bonds. So we sent that information out. Um, we also work with the Standard and Poor's, which is the rating agency. And, uh, Standard and Poor's has provided the bond rating for the city in the past. And so that bond rating is a snapshot or a kind of a quick um, way for a, an investor or a bond underwriter to determine the credit worthiness of the city. It, it really reflects the credit quality of the city. And so a, a investor could look at your bonds, which ended up being rated A minus and compare that to other bond issues that are being sold or available in the marketplace. The bond rating for those of you that are not familiar with, with some of the history, um, it was triple D plus, um, going back several years ago in, on February tenth of twenty twenty two. Uh, in, in the reading report, if you're interested, is on page twenty one. And I, I will apologize in advance. Our new format for these reports has the print or the font so small that you can barely read it. But the important part of that rating report is that they assigned an A minus rating with a stable offer. But if you go back to twenty twenty two, the city was previously, uh, rated triple B plus, which is one notch below A minus. And it was really a, a, a major accomplishment for the city to get upgraded and pulled into that A category. It makes a pretty big difference on the interest rates that you would get when you're selling a bond issue. Uh, so that, that prior upgrade occurred before this process that we went through. So that's not something that we accomplished this time. But the really encouraging part of working with the analyst and the feedback that we received was they, they came back and said, we're not upgrading the rating from A minus to A, A, that's the next level up. But they said, we do see upward pressure on that rating. And, um, if the city continues um, having similar financial results as to what you've been having the last couple of years, they could see that rating moving up even one more notch. So a, a, a rating upgrade is not out of the question. And it, um, you know, the, this report, you'll see comments in here about solid financial reserves and, and management of the city and, and just, um, budgetary performance. It, I mean, that's what led to that stable A minus rating, but it also led to that comment that you're not far away from a, from an upgrade. So you should be should be proud of that. You should be proud of your administration for that financial management of the city. It's, uh, it was a big deal in twenty two to get that upgrade and it would be a, a nice step in the right direction to get yet another upgrade. You don't have to be too far away. So, uh, once we had the, if you turn back to page three, uh, once we had the preliminary official statement sent out to bidders, the notice of sale was published, the rating was assigned, uh, we then, um, you know, had the, a competitive sale scheduled today and, and the there's a website called Parity where we told bidders that they can submit their bids through the Parity website. And at ten o'clock, we opened up the bids to see where we stood today. I will admit, I was a little nervous going into the sale because uh, we had a couple of bidders that typically bid on Kansas issues, uh, and they said that you weren't planning to submit a bid this time just because they weren't seeing investor demand. And we've also had, um, uh, record supply in the bond market just nationwide the last couple of weeks. And so, and rates have been moving around a bit, but fortunately, um, there was a pretty significant decline in rates going into the sale today. Um, I was concerned that we may not get many bids. Um, I've had one situation in my career and have been doing this for thirty six years where we had no bids. And that's that's not a fun conversation. And it leaves you kind of scrambling, trying to figure out, okay, what's your next step? Uh, but really pleased that we ended up with three bids. Um, and typically on a competitive sale, we'll get between three to five bids. And, uh, despite some of that volume and, and headwinds we were facing, uh, we ended up with really good result. Uh, Robert W Baird, uh, submitted the best bid at an interest rate of three point eight seven percent. Um, TD Securities, which has been, Robert W Baird is out of Wisconsin. But that is, uh, they have what they call an underwriting syndicate, but there's a number of firms that kind of work together to put in a joint bid. Um, and that includes some of those firms that we typically see bidding alone, like a Country Club Bank or a Central States. Um, often they're part of that Robert W Baird group. Uh, TD Securities out of New York uh, submitted a bid of three point nine four percent. And then we had UMB Bank that submitted a bid of four point three four percent. So when we look back to some of the preliminary estimates of interest rates as we were working with you and planning for this, we had, um, an estimate of about four point nine nine percent on that direct placement process. Uh, we had a, an average rate estimate on a public sale of about three point seven six percent. So we're a little bit, you know, the three point eight seven is a little bit above where that early estimate that we had shared with the city, uh, but still very close. And we were, we were pleased given some of the, you know, challenges in the bond market to have a, of what I would consider a very aggressive interest rate. Um, the other thing I would point out too is that, um, Robert W Baird, as part of their bid, they, um, offered to buy the bonds from the city at the, the hundred percent of the face value of the, the issue. It's one million five sixty. But then they also are paying what's called a reoffering premium. And it's pretty common in bond market here in the last ten years. Almost all of the sales that we, we have, we'll see some level of premium that's paid that, that improves their bid. Um, so not only are they paying one million five sixty, but they're paying a, a net premium of about fifty four thousand to the city. So you end up with the three point eight seven percent interest rate, fifty four thousand more in the project fund to spend on the improvement. So we thought that was noteworthy and, and a good outcome as well. So once we had the bids, uh, received today, uh, locked in the, the final interest rates, uh, we shared that with, uh, Andrew's office and his staff, they were able to take it. The information that's presented to you here this evening, the final interest rates, the amounts, uh, put those in the resolution and the ordinance, uh, that are presented to you this evening. Assuming that you move forward and adopt those, those two, uh, will be ordinance and resolution, then that will allow us to move forward with the closing of the issue. And right now we have that scheduled for July ninth. So on the day of closing, Robert W Baird will pay the purchase price to the city. Once we verify that you've received that at your, your bank account, then we release the bond certificates to Robert W Baird. Uh, their role as an underwriter, then they're out finding investors, the end investors for this issue. And, and once bonds are released to them, then they'll pass those on to the ultimate investors. And at that point, the issue would be closed. But I'll stop there and I'm happy to answer any questions about the sale process or the outcome. And if not, um, turn it over to Andrew and he can talk to you about the legal side of the process and steps you go through to, to closing.
So they move the grade level up more than once a year or just whenever they notice?
The rating? Yeah, they do, um, uh, what they call, uh, like periodic surveillance, review. And a lot of, we send the the financial statements to the rating agencies, you know, each year they'll look at it. And if they see something that they feel justifies taking an, an updated look at it, um, then they'll do a, a, a review. And so you can have a rating upgrade between a bond issue. You don't have to be doing a bond issue to get that upgrade.
Okay.
And so that's what we're hoping is that, you know, maybe with a, one more good audit and, you know, we ask them if they'll take a, a, you know, look at it or maybe they'll do a, a rating upgrade at that point in time.
So the next potential upgrade would affect future, um, bond issues, but doesn't, doesn't affect anything with these bonds already out in market?
Correct. Yeah. If you receive an upgrade, say a year from now, it doesn't change the interest rates. It doesn't, I mean, it improves the value of those bonds that those investors are holding, but it doesn't change the repayment schedule for the city. Um, what it really does is sets the stage for you to get even better interest rates the next time you, uh, go to the market and sell an issue or you know, sometimes we'll see a, a drop in interest rates where we can go in and refinance an issue. And lower interest rates and maybe a, a rating upgrade just helps you maybe capture some savings, uh, if that's available.
So you were saying, uh, referencing page eight. Instead of the one, uh, one, you know, in five hundred and sixty thousand because of the premium. And then there's another writer's discount there. Uh, the actual amount of funds we get are the one million six fourteen, one sixty nine?
That's correct. Yep. Yeah, and, and, um, on the day of closing, they will send that amount less what's called a good faith deposit. We have them post a, a good faith deposit. I think it was thirty one thousand two hundred. It's wired transferred to your account today. If they fail to go through with the closing and you keep that, uh, good faith deposit to help cover the cost of having to go back out and rebid the issue. So part of that has already been paid in.
Any other questions? Greg, I'm sorry. I interrupted you.
No, no, I, I was going to apologize for the small print. We switched to a new format and it is really tough to read. So my apologies.
So to Greg's point that he made just a bit earlier about, uh, the ability to go back to the market at some point and refinance. Greg has helped the city do that in the past, uh, since I've been mayor and, uh, saved us well over a million dollars in, uh, in interest. Uh, due to that refinancing. So, uh, his value is, uh, is, is, is very great to me. And he's proved it over and over for many years to the city. So thanks Greg for, for, for this and for all you continue to do for us.
Uh, thank you. I, uh, really enjoy working with the city. Appreciate the opportunity and, and especially appreciate the kind words. So thank you.
Fantastic.
But no other questions. Happy to turn it over to Andrew and he can talk to you about, um, uh, the legal side of the process and, um, but again, uh, thank you and appreciate the opportunity.
Thanks Greg.
Absolutely.
Greg did an excellent job of explaining to you the process that we have all gone through. Um, and so what I will just point out is that we've got two items on the agenda. I'm actually going to ask for an extra motion. Uh, but what you have on the agenda is the bond ordinance and the bond resolution. Uh, Matt mentioned it at the very beginning of this. The bond ordinance is what actually authorizes the city to issue those bonds and incur the debt. The resolution then is the separate action that sets out all the terms of the bonds that we just talked about. So what the interest rate is, what the repayment schedule is, what all those, uh, actual active terms of those bonds are. The only thing that I would ask in addition and first is if we could have a, a, a motion to accept the low bid from Robert W Baird, uh, and, and we will have, well, actually if we could have the, uh, president of the council authorized to sign that bid in that same motion. That way we can, uh, have the bid form signed today after the meeting and, and return it to them tomorrow. Um, everything else, of course, we'll have the mayor sign when he gets back into town. So that's, that won't be an issue, but happy to answer any questions you might have about any of the process or any of these documents.
So you're wanting three seconds?
Yes, and I'd like the, the extra motion first.
Any questions? Hearing none, would somebody care to make a motion to accept the low bid from Robert Baird?
I'll do that.
Councilman Councilman McCarty moves?
Yeah, we need to also include the president of the council to sign, uh, the bid.
Yep, yeah.
And then the motion.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
But fine.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries. And now I guess we go to ordinance thirteen ninety five authorizing the issue of series twenty twenty four geo bonds. Would somebody care to make that motion that we adopt ordinance thirteen ninety five?
A motion.
Councilman Wilkins moves. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Councilman McCarty seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll pull the council, councilman by.
Yes.
Councilman McCarty?
Yes.
Councilman Wilkins?
Yes.
Councilman Jorgensen?
Yes.
Ordinance thirteen ninety five is hereby adopted and the mayor will sign when he gets back in town. Next is resolution twenty twenty four dash oh six prescribing the sale of series twenty twenty four geo bonds. Would somebody care to make a motion that we adopt resolution twenty twenty four dash zero six?
Make that motion.
Councilman by moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Jorgensen seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll pull the council, Councilman Jorgensen.
Yes.
Councilman Wilkins?
Yes.
Councilman McCarty?
Yes.
Councilman by?
Yes.
Okay, resolution twenty twenty four dash zero six is hereby adopted. And now we are moving on to a grant. Is that it for the bonds is? Mission accomplished?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you much. It's always good to see you and have you here, Greg. And, and, uh, again, Greg's been instrumental. Don't, uh, he's a pretty modest guy, but he's also been instrumental in helping direct us as a council and, and, uh, we have three fairly new people on the council, but, uh, Barney will, uh, recall all the work that he has done in helping us guide the, uh, when we put together our strategic plan and our finance plan and and our fund balance, uh, goals. And you can see what that's done for us. And Greg's been instrumental in, in helping us get there. So thank you very much again, Greg.
You're welcome and thank you.
Okay, well, let's move on to a grant agreement with Kansas Corporation Commission Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant Program for one hundred ten thousand nine hundred and eighty eight dollars to replace remaining street lamps. Mr. Stiles, tell us what a great job your assistant is doing.
Yeah, uh, well, actually I would defer to her. She's, she snuck in when you couldn't see her, Lou.
Okay.
So yes.
Don't get, don't hide Kelly.
She is doing an amazing job. But I would just note before Kelly gets going that she passed her, uh, grant writing certification course from Forah Hayes. So congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Well, okay, two weeks ago, I came to you with an agreement for sixty seven lights, which was great. That was thirty thousand, thirty thousand dollars. Um, and then I did some digging. Uh, it was thought before, like with the first grant, when we were in the planning process, Todd had asked me, um, what would it take? Like, how much can we do for the whole town, for the rest of the town to be LED? And I said, oh, pump the brakes. I don't know if I'll accept that much money. I thought that would be quite a bit of money. And he was like, okay. And so I was like, tell, tell me on a map, like what are the most, you know, um, uh, immediate areas that need replacing? And that was the sixty seven that I presented to you two weeks ago. Well, after that, I did some digging into the KCC's award list just to see what other cities and what other municipalities were asking for. Um, and immediately started regretting being apprehensive the first time. Well, I made a quick call and asked if they were still open for applications and they were. And I went straight to Todd and I said, how many more lights do we need to finish up the city? And he said, two hundred and forty five. And I said, okay. And so I readjusted the budget. I readjusted the narrative. And I sent in another application. And last Thursday, we've been awarded a hundred and ten thousand nine hundred and eighty eight dollars. And yeah, and it's all the same, uh, pretty much all the same. Uh, reporting requirements will be the same. Uh, the agreement should be the same, just for a different amount. So yeah, I announced that you approved that, allow the mayor to sign and it'll be underway. Parts will be ordered.
So I guess the guys that have to do the work there.
They are.
Capacity for that.
Yeah, they're, they're ready to go. Um, they, they actually enjoy doing the streetlights because when they put these up, they have a, uh, five, well, I think these lights we've talked about have a five year, uh, warranty. So they don't have to touch them for at least five years. And if they do, they get replaced, uh, which is a lot better than the high pressure sodiums would say are constantly replacing. So this is a set it and forget it kind of thing. And, uh, they're excited to do it.
Right.
And I will mention that the parts that, I think I said this, the parts that we historically ordered for HBS lights are now discontinued. So we're gonna have to do it anyway. And here we go.
Wow, well, thanks for taking that initiative and getting these extra funds. That's, that's wonderful.
One of the things I would say in this is with these two grants, we'll actually end up saving about thirty thousand dollars a year on top of this too. Uh, with maintenance and the energy savings. Uh, so it's a gift that keeps on giving, really. It's thirty thousand dollars a year that we won't have to put out, uh, on this.
They will operate off the same, uh, uh, dust to dawn circuitry then that, that exists?
Yeah, yeah, they'll work the same way. These actually are adjustable. Um, we had a conversation about that this afternoon. Uh, they, what we've, what we've been told by our, our representative is that we're actually a pretty bright city. Um, the way we set them are pretty bright. Um, these, these new lights will have three functions. Uh, so you could actually set the brightness level if you wanted to. Um, and so they, they actually, our test driving one over on the other side of town, and they decided to go with the middle setting, uh, just to see what's kind of comparable. Uh, but the guy, the, the expert, I guess, said that, you know, you're right, you probably have too many lights or they're too bright. Um, so you could probably tone it down a notch, but I would say we just go back in and do it the way we normally do it because people get really used to that. Um, and then when you start taking away and it gets darker, people start to have problems with that. So, um, yeah, I think these, these will be, uh, you know, they'll have a different kind of s- pattern, but the same sort of light, um, little cleaner look too. So they won't be that yellow. And no, no purple ones. I know. And then those LED. And then those LED, there was a bad batch of purple ones, um, these are not those, so.
I know the police appreciate bright lights when they're working at night.
Yeah, there's a balancing act in there. Homeowners don't like super bright and there's always somebody with it being in their, you know, in their home, but yeah, we try to balance that out.
Do you know if Todd gave an update for, since they have to replace, since they replace all of the lights now, do we have a timeline for when that could be?
Uh, really dependent upon when the parts come in. Um, he's told me that he's warned our, our representative that we're gonna be ordering quite, quite a few lights um soon because we'll only have these funds for a year. So we need to make sure that the, that the parts are rolling in pretty regularly in turn to get them all up in time. So, yeah, it's dependent upon, but it, but it should be a few months uh before they're all put up and ready to go. It shouldn't be an issue with um time issue when, when they're actually replacing them.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Don't don't like that much.
I don't really know much you could do with them, um. There may be somebody out there who would want some older high-pressure stuff, maybe, I don't know. Uh, we would share that with all our connections within KMU, KBP. Uh, I know there's a couple of cities that use similar type of lights and you could, they can make parts out of these essentially, so you know, maybe an opportunity there. I don't know if we'll get any money out of it, but maybe you can help somebody.
Any other questions or comments? Kelly, again, congratulations. Keep that, keep that grant writing going. You're doing an awesome job. So impressed. Okay, so at this point, I'm gonna look for a motion to uh to uh approve the acceptance and uh the grant agreement with Kansas Corporation Commission Energy and Efficiency Conversation Block Grant for a hundred and ten thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars and authorize the mayor to sign the uh the agreement.
I might get motion.
Councilman McCarty moves, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman by seconds, is there any further discussion?
I do have one question. Sorry, one question. I, when I was reading some of the write-up, it said something about Durham in there. Do we, do we do the lights in Durham?
No, that was, okay, one of the, um, they were going to um prioritize communities that were underprivileged or a low income. Um, we are not a low-income community, unfortunately. We're not considered on their census records, um, low, but we serve Durham through our school system, our district, um, which is considered a low-income community. So that was just sort of a
Thrown in there to help the process.
Try to, yeah.
Okay, all right, that's what that's.
Good question, good catch. Any other questions or comments? We have a motion on the floor in a second. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
So now we are on to a proposal for water production plant controller replacement, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So uh, if you haven't been in our water treatment plant, there's two controller boxes, they're giant boxes that sit at the top of the filters. Uh, they control the ins and outs of the filters, all the functionality of the filters. Uh, they were put in in two thousand and six by Microcom when we did the plant renovations. Uh, and one of the things that they did there, uh, they didn't, they didn't take into account the chlorine and the impact of the environment on that. So what we've been seeing is a lot of failure of those parts. Uh, I took some pictures of it and I don't know if you can kind of see it, but I'll share this so we can all have a take a look here. Um, there's a lot of corrosion, the issue is corrosion. We start getting into these parts. Took it, put it on the other side of the screen. Sorry about that. Move you over. There we go. So when you look at kind of these parts, um, you can kind of see that all this brown stuff is corrosion. Uh, that's, this is the main driver of this box and all these parts are showing corrosion. You can't really see it very well in this picture, but all the the nodes and the connections on there are also corroded. It's to the point where we can't remove some of the screws. Um, and so we, you know, this is problem for us because this is where we control most of our inflow uh, and do most of our filtration in filters three, four, and five. Um, so what we did was we went and talked to Microcom about can we replace some of the brains in this machine? Um, and they, of course, were were hesitant to do any kind of replacement other than a full, full change-out. Um, because they said this was not designed correctly, even though they designed it in two thousand and six. Um, and we went back and forth with them quite a bit on that. So, yeah, the situation is we need to kind of get this thing up and running, um. You know, Microcom, that's, that's a look of what the top of it looks like. So all these not, these digital knob or these analog knobs control different functionality. Uh, and it's got kind of a touchscreen there that you could see how that works. And what they've proposed is to move, Microcom's proposal was to move this box into another area of the plant and then basically remote in with a tablet, um, to where they could control it from a different place within the plant. And all this communicates back to our main SCADA system, which is the control system that we use to maintain uh the entire plant and it talks to their water towers, uh, collects a lot of data that we need for our state reports. And so, you know, we gotta do something with it. This is, this, their, their proposal was to do that. And of course, when they put their proposal in, they also included some upgrades to the um, to the radios too. Um, because apparently we need nine hundred hertz radios to do this now. And so their proposal ended up being uh forty-seven, stop the share there. Ended up being forty-seven thousand, a little over forty-seven thousand. That's what happens when you try to share everything. Bring it back over here so I can read it. Yeah, and and with Microcom, it's, it's very much like any of these, it's proprietary hardware, software. I mean, if we have to fix something, they sort of have, they have to provide the parts at least and they really want to prefer to provide the technicians as well. Um, so we, we've been talking with Matt Garing over at LCON about some potential alternatives. Uh, he's pretty confident and he's built a system similar to this in a town in Nebraska. And he felt like he could build a system uh that would replace that box and back into the Microcom system so we wouldn't lose any functionality. Uh, and then, you know, make it to where it would be something that's more open source, that we could pull shelf, parts off the shelf and plug them in if we needed to in the future. Um, he also proposed changing out the cabinet to be positive pressure so that we wouldn't have the chlorine buildup in there uh, which would take care of the erosion issue that's on there. The, the only problem we had with LCON is that, you know, the LCON, Matt's one person. And uh, when you're putting all your eggs on one basket with him, there's a possibility of quits, wins lottery, gets hit by a bus, whatever. Uh, he may not be there to help us out. Uh, but what he did find was the per uh the producer of these parts, they have some technicians uh out of Kansas City that were able to to backfill for him or substitute for him if need be. Um, so that puts it a little bit in a different situation, felt like that maybe that wouldn't be that bad of a deal. Um, and of course, his, his proposal was thirty thousand dollars versus forty-three thousand dollars. Um, so it's open source, kind of off-the-shelf, integrates with our existing system. We're using a local vendor, which is always nice too, um, local service person, even though it is just one person, it's still local. Uh, and then, you know, if we had to, we could get back to go to Kansas City. So that's, that's kind of the two proposals. Uh, financially, you know, we didn't really have this in the budget for this year. Uh, we do have we, we, previously, we're, we were thinking that we could replace the components as we needed to, and we had been able to up until this year. Uh, but the erosion's gotten to the point where we can't really do that anymore. And Microcom isn't willing to stand behind any parts that we put in ourselves. So they're kind of, they kind of are forcing our hand to do something with this. Uh, and we've been adding some different chemicals with this KDHE pa- uh pilot study and they're, they can be a little bit more corrosive if they're getting to the environment too. So it's just gonna get worse, and so we really need to make this adjustment. Uh, we do have sufficient fund balance, there's cash in the, in the fund to do that, it's unallocated. We'll probably have to make an adjustment to the budget at the end of the year. Uh, we were, we're probably gonna do that anyway. Uh, we usually have to tidy up those things at the end of the year. This is just one of those things that's sort of unforeseen that we really have to take care of. So, um, like I said before, we had a little bit of hesitation with the LCON just because of the fact we're so reliant on Matt, but feel, we feel, we feel pretty comfortable with him. Uh, he's done a ton with our, our plant and, you know, having that backup is, is reassuring thing, so. And it also is nice that it's thirty thousand dollars versus forty-three. So, uh, we would recommend moving forward with the LCON proposal uh and have Matt Garing build this system for us and and do the programming to back it into a Microcom system.
Do you have a timetable on parts?
Yeah, since they are off-the-shelf kind of parts, he can do it relatively quickly. It'll be kind of on his schedule, but he thought within about a month they could have it all put together, which is good. This is the worst time of the year for, for the water department with the blue-green algae. Uh, it has been real bad a couple of days, uh, and it's sort of ebbed and flowed. So, uh, yeah, I think the sooner the better and he, he kind of felt like thirty to forty days would be enough, so.
Do we know, because I know you said if Matt isn't available, then we can use people, technicians in Kansas City. Um, do we know about? That's what I'm looking for. I guess how quickly they can come out, you know, compared to um, Microcom in terms of, you know, if we have an issue, how quickly they can come out, get it fixed, diagnose the issue and whatnot. I think that would be nice to know as well if we do move forward with that, just so that we can just know if something does go wrong, how soon we can get it fixed by going with them. I mean, but overall, I'm, I'm very big on not being shackled to proprietary. Yeah, proprietary hardware, software regardless, and I do like the idea that we could just go in and if need be fix it ourselves. So I think this is a really nice opportunity, especially if it can help with the burden that the water plant has to go through. Um, and as far as moving the controller and moving it and accessing it from a tablet. Do we know where they're moving it to, how easily it'll be accessible if, let's say, something happens, they can't access it remotely? And I guess do you?
Yeah, the tablet is a concern.
Yeah.
Tablets have a way of finding the ground and finding different places and can be problematic.
Yeah.
Especially when you're up on a catwalk and you know, looking at stuff. Um, so that was, that was a concern that they had with that. That's kind of the way they've been going, Microcom's been going.
Yeah.
Um, you know, they would move it into the chem- other chemical feed room, which is up the stairs and kind of to the right.
Okay.
Uh, less corrosive environment for sure, but, you know, it, it is far away. They would, they actually talked about drilling a hole, well, creating a window so that you could see down into the filters from there.
Okay.
So it's an extra, extra little thing you'd have to do.
Okay.
Knock a hole in the wall uh for like a porthole, but yeah, that would be, that would be kind of their proposal for that and that's why they're upgrading radios too, doing all these other things.
Sorry.
To go back to answer your other question about the, the Kansas City technicians, I think it would probably be pretty similar.
Okay.
Microcom is not like Microcom has an office here either. They have a really big team, they're a national team. Uh, they do pretty good with the support and service. I don't know, I, I think they would be fairly comparable, um, but I couldn't say for sure.
Okay, uh, and so just to make sure with Matt's idea, it would just be creating a positive pressure so that it wouldn't, the corrosiveness wouldn't have to begin with. But not necessarily moving it, right? So it would stay in the same location, just reinforcing it so that there's less corrosion buildup.
Yeah, I think it would actually be a new box.
Okay.
He tar- I think they talked about it being a little bit smaller too, uh, but positive pressure to keep the chlorine out and that would be, that would be the solution for that.
Any other questions? So you are recommending that the uh LCON solution, is that what staff is recommending?
Yeah, that is what, what we're looking at.
Okay. Uh, would somebody on the council prepare, is, are you prepared to make that motion that we uh accept the bid from LCON for the uh, we, I guess it would be the replacement of the water production plant controller? In the amount of, is it thirty thousand even, Matt, or?
Yeah, thirty thousand even.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Councilman by moves, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Jorgensen seconds, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, uh, we will accept the bid from LCON for thirty thousand dollars and we will have a nice open-source uh controller that uh that will help us going forward. Okay, next up is revisions to the flexible spending account, Mr. Styles.
So we've got two items here. Um, as we switched our health insurance from a plan year to a calendar year so to have, we have to change our flex count, uh, flex spending account to that as well. So the first thing we have is the agreement there with our flex spending program administrators. Uh, it's exactly the same as our, our previous agreement, it just switches it to a six-month agreement. Uh, and then it goes back onto a year, calendar year, starting January one of twenty-five. So, uh, that's the first thing. The second piece of this is, is involves employees. So what we normally do is provide a five hundred dollar match uh for employees for FSA. That's something that we had done for a number of years, got it away from and then came back to it. I think two years ago is when we came back and changed that policy back, so. Um, so we need to figure out what we want to do for the six months on the FSA. Um, it kind of makes sense logically to do just half of that match, twenty-five or two hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, I, I'm always gonna go to bat for the employee and say, you know what, five hundred isn't that big a difference from our perspective. Um, you know, I think it would be a nice little, nice something for people. We don't have everybody, not everybody matches it, not everybody uses it. Um, we had, you know, seventeen, about sixty percent uh that would actually access that. It's open to everybody, but they could access it. Um, the actual dollars and cents, it's only about four thousand dollars more if we were to go and do the five hundred dollar match versus the two fifty. So, you know, for that, presuming that we go back and and continue on the calendar year at five hundred, you know, we're seeking a little guidance on how you want us to proceed with that match for this six-month period. As far as the agreement go, the FSA agreement goes, no, no impact there, just switches us over and gets us on the right plan. Um, the, the match is, is one thing we need to kind of talk about. Uh, last year's contributions, I'd just say that employees really like this program. We put in about thirty thousand, almost thirty thousand, twenty-eight for uh, of city contribution, employee contributions to the nine, ninety-six hundred that the city put in. So it's really something that our employees use, it's popular with them. Again, it's optional, but it is something that gets used pretty heavily, so we're recommending moving forward with the agreement. If you ask me for a recommendation on the match, I'd say five hundred, but two fifty is reasonable as well, so.
So it's, this is for a six-month period?
Correct.
So the five hundred would be an increase, two fifty would be normal, because it's usually five hundred for a year.
Correct.
Okay, so in your recommendation, you're recommending then basically an increase because we're talking
Yeah.
Money, money for six months.
Yeah, for the six.
And then when we go to an annual, do we go back to five hundred or then are we at maybe a higher? To five hundred, or then are we at maybe a higher level?
Yeah, I think that the policy says five hundred, so we would just keep the policy in place.
This is kind of a short term.
A short term year. Yeah. One time kind of thing, to get us from A to B.
We bumped it to five hundred, it's like more people would sign up for it.
I don't know, we have a few people who are, who are waiting to see. What it is, and they'll, they'll probably go match. Whatever the match is. Don't know. I didn't change mine, I'm just gonna keep it at what it is for, for that six months, cause we use it. I don't know, I think it's kind of half, I don't know, how many people you think are?
We've had a handful that are waiting to see what the council does, um and they would likely, like Matt said, match. If we did two fifty as a council, they would likely match, you know, do that, and if it was five, that's what they would do, so. It's. It really depends on it, whether it's a family uh or an individual that uses a significant amount of funds compared to someone who doesn't use as much. Um employees can't carry over a portion of it, that's been a big question, probably bigger than the matching, so they, they can carry over um. Six hundred and forty.
Forty some though.
The next plan year, as written in the agreement, yeah.
I'm, I'm not against. Going with the five hundred. Yes, I mean, yes, it will cost the city more, of course, but I, I think. Helping out the employees is also a really nice touch as well, so, and like I said, I'm. For personally, since I. I just think it's a nice thing, so I'm, I'm not against.
And we're not committing to a long-term, larger expenditure, either.
Yeah.
No, just the one time.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, we need two separate.
Yeah, two separate actions, ones to approve the agreement, uh the FSA agreement. As presented, then the match, whichever way you want to go with that.
Well, let's start with the uh, with the adjustments to the flexible spending account uh timetable. Would somebody care to make that motion?
I will.
Councilman McCarty moves, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman By seconds, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, the next we will uh address the flexible spending match. And would somebody care to make a motion on? Either two hundred and fifty or five hundred?
Make a motion on the five hundred.
Okay, Councilman By has a motion for a five hundred dollar match for this six month period.
Oh, second.
Councilman Wilkinson sec- seconds it, um is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh we will adjust it to a calendar year, and we will put in five hundred for this remaining calendar year.
Thank you.
All, all right. Next up is another uh pay or personnel cost item, and that's pay adjustments for part-time police officers, Mr. Styles.
Yeah, thanks, uh Jesse, Police Chief Hebert wanted me to, to put this forward to, he asked me uh if I would be willing to do it, and I said, well, would. With that kind of a, a change, you really need to go to the city council to take a look at that, uh since it is. Reflective of everybody within that part-time range. Um and so, you know, he, he kind of lays out, I had him put it in a memo for you, a letter for you that. You know, kind of the situation and how things look with regard to the layout here in the county. Uh the sheriff's office is paying nineteen twenty, Marion Police pays twenty. Uh courthouse security is, is nineteen, um. So you know, you can kind of see where that is. Uh with versus what we have, which is twenty, okay, twenty. Uh so we're already at, sort of we're at the top with that is, but. Uh in Jesse's opinion, that he, he prefer to increase that up to twenty-two an hour. Um, we do have several full-time or part-time officers, every one of our officers, even the part-time ones are certified, so. Uh we pull from. Actually from Marion and the sheriff's office, a couple other places that kind of come in and fill in those shifts. And Jesse makes the point in here that, you know, when we, we point in, put in one of those. Uh part-time people versus bringing in one of our full-time people to cover a shift, it's significantly less expensive for us. Uh because we're not paying overtime, you know, there's no benefit costs attached to that too. Uh and so he's, he's kind of running the numbers here, Jesse's very thorough when he puts these together, so I, I, I did not verify this, but I trust this is pretty accurate. Um with the first five months of the year, they've worked about two hundred and seventeen hours. Um with using part-time people, a high estimate for him, felt like it would be between seven hundred and nine hundred. Uh and at the nine hundred dollar, in nine hundred hours, it'd be about eighteen hundred dollars more uh. Per year, for this year, if this was to go into effect, so. Not a significant amount of money, uh it's more, again, I'm an appreciation thing, I think he really works hard to keep part-time people. Uh they're hard to get, and that's, that's the other piece of this puzzle, uh getting a good part-time person is very difficult, uh. We, like I say, we've been lucky, we've had pretty good stable of them. Uh and they're all very good, I mean, I think they're all very good in their own way. Uh so, you know, I, I don't have any problem backing this proposal, I just wanted Jesse to, to make that, that pitch to you guys. Um, you know, from a budgetary standpoint, we, what, how we budget for part-time officers, we basically just take a chunk. Uh and say, we're gonna, we're gonna probably spend this many hours, and that's how it's budgeted in, is just part-time pay. And then whoever fills in and does that is. Uh we also have a pretty significant amount of overtime that we factor in for regular police officers. Uh so I don't, I don't anticipate there being any issue budgetary wise. Making this change. Um, they always, Jesse's extremely diligent in man- managing his budget, and he always comes in under uh on the personnel side too, so.
So, just to, I guess somewhere else would say, this isn't going to negatively affect our budget. By going with this, and Jesse is also good at managing his budget to be efficient as well.
He's probably the most diligent of, of our department heads, I would argue.
So you say that sometimes it is hard to get, to fill these part-time spots, and so. With an increase like this to twenty-two, it would make us the highest paying. Group in the area, it looks like.
Yep.
So, I guess the assumption could be made that. Um, maybe it would make it easier to fill, uh when we need it?
Yeah, that's sort of, uh hopefully.
It'd just be a little bit more competitive with the pay.
So Matt, we adjusted this, what, two years ago?
Yes, we did.
And what, where were we before we made the adjustment, do you recall?
These are eighteen fifty or nineteen. Can't remember.
Okay.
Then we went to twenty.
And then uh who, who followed suit? After that?
Everybody else.
So, are we just continuing to create an arms race, if you will?
Oh, that is a fair question. Yeah, that's a fair question. You know, I don't, I don't know how to answer that, that, that is a possibility, I mean, they could, they could come out, I think the sheriff's been particularly aggressive in trying to find. Uh, you know, more pay increases for his people, I know that Marion Police have, well, they struggle to fill their, their open positions, their full-time positions, but. Courthouse is probably the most stable of that group, it's probably the easiest of that section too, so. I don't know, Lou, that's a fair question.
Well, I, I'm not saying I'm against it, I'm just suggesting that uh what's happened in the past, I mean. We've had this issue brought up, we addressed it, and then everybody followed suit, and I guess my question now is. Are we having trouble getting people?
We do have trouble filling shifts occasionally, um the part-time officers that we do have, we, we tend to. Tend to rely on the, the same group of four or five of them. Uh and if they are unavailable, uh one of them was hurt recently and was out, out for a long while. Um, and when you can't find one, yeah, it gets to be pretty difficult. And like I say, then it ends up being somebody else filling in the shift that's, that's already one of our people, and that gets really expensive, so. Uh I think Jesse's, the thought for him would be that he could expand that pool a little bit, um if he had a competitive pay.
And until everybody else goes up, just like they did the past time.
Yeah, and then we're competing on all the other great things about working for the city of Hillsboro, which I would put that against anybody.
Well, at some point, you know. I don't think we have unlimited uh, an unlimited budget to uh continue to raise, raise pay, we need to be competitive. Um, you know, I, I think uh Chief Hebert and his, his team of, are doing a great job. And so, you know, I could see supporting it this time, but, you know, I'm, I'm gonna be a little eerie in, if I hear this request come back next. Next year, when everybody else has raised their rates to uh, to match ours. Because all we're doing is just increasing the cost for everybody.
That's fair.
That's, that's my opinion, it's the councils to take action, so I will leave it now, and is there, are there any other questions or comments? So I'll leave it.
Uh, oh, I was gonna say.
Go ahead.
I think it's cheaper to pay some guy to come in and work at a just a break time and a half to one of our regular officers. And I don't, I don't really know if there'll be a. Arms race, or it might be, but uh, you know, Marion's having enough trouble finding people to work full-time, and probably reserves. I just think uh. It's a good benefit to have people you can count on to work when somebody's sick, and we only used to have three people, and that was really a mess then, but it's a lot easier now than it was then. So I would be in favor of helping the guys out this time, and like you said, maybe next time I have to think about a little more.
Yeah, and I mean, that's, that's absolutely fair, especially. Considering, I mean, like, like you guys are saying, cause we also don't want to overwhelm the full-time staff if they can't. Find part-timers to cover the seven to nine hundred hours, if that is about the range, so. If this can't help lighten load. Keep them from being overwhelmed, I'm also not against it, and like Lou said, at this. You know, if we get the same conversation a couple years from now, then we can evaluate it.
Any other comments? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to uh, to uh make the pay adjustment as uh, as outlined here in Chief Hebert's proposal.
Oh my god.
To twenty, twenty-two dollars per hour for part-time police help.
Oh my god.
Councilman Mc- Councilman McCarty moves, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman By seconds. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, now we have revised job description for our new Director of Parks and Rec, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir, so uh when I was talking with. David Etiger about this position, you know, we had talked about. Potentially kind of consolidating over quality of life, outdoor activity, uh positions down in, under one person. Uh I think that actually really helps to uh balance kind of the workload there. Uh we've seen it at the golf course particularly, while I've been doing this interim gig, where. We could take somebody who would normally work for us at the sports complex and pull them over into the golf course for a little bit to help kind of catch up on things. Um and so there's a lot of opportunity, I think, to, to really improve the use of labor and be better uh to allocate those resources for us. Uh and when I, when I talked with David, interviewed him, I did mention that we, we, if we wanted to move forward with you, I think I would want to. To put uh the golf and the bowling alley, potentially if we have the bowling alley. Uh under you, so that you could kind of manage that as one kind of piece. Um, that makes it a little simpler for everybody, and I think it makes a lot of sense. We talked about doing it last year, uh when we were hiring Jerry Mendoza, but. Uh at that point, I didn't think that Jerry was a person that could probably handle that at that, at juncture, cause he didn't have a lot of experience in that area. Uh and so I think this, this, this time it makes sense, because uh we've got a pretty high-quality candidate, he's got a lot of exposure. Uh with golf and actually has run a bowling alley a little bit, and. Um, you know, makes, makes a lot of sense, I think, at this time, uh and. It, it ultimately, I think, is where we wanted to go anyway, and so what I would like to do is, is to adjust that job description, and of course, David knows about this. To, 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 to include those things in, in his purview, so. Instead of having a department head for golf, we would have. Director of Parks and Recreation, who has golf, sports complex, museum, and pool all underneath, so that whole area effectively fills under one.
That's all the stuff in red here.
Yeah, I made a couple changes and actually sent out another version of that, cause I didn't have golf on this one, um. So another, I added the golf back, part back in, I had to, this is an earlier draft, so. Uh it assumes that we're taking on the bowling alley, which we're sort of headed toward, so. I think it kind of makes sense to do that, so what I'm seeking is, is uh council's approval to, to change this job description and, and kind of move forward with that organizationally.
Question? Questions? Comments? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to uh approve the revised job description for the Director of Parks and Rec. Councilman Jorgensen moves, is there a second? Councilman Wilkins seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and now we come to an executive session, and uh Mr. Styles, do you have someone in the room that can make that motion?
I believe we do. Wants to do that.
Oh, I've, I've got it, oh, go ahead, okay. My good.
Go for it, yeah.
I move that the city council recess into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel pursuant to KSA seven five dash. Four, three, one, nine, one, for a period of ten minutes, the meeting will include the city administrator and city attorney, the open meeting will resume at seven forty-seven. Seven forty-seven PM.
Hey, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Councilman By seconds, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we're now in executive session.
Either a thousand degrees on here. We replaced the, the units in here, and it was. It has been this way ever since.
It is wonderful.
I'm glad, like, I'm a little cold, right on.
Yeah, I've had to start wearing jackets.
Wearing shorts and old?
Yeah, a little chilly.
Yeah.
People are not wearing all day.
Oh, I'm an ounce. From the south.
Okay, we're back in open session, let the record show that no action was taken during that executive session. And uh we are now ready for Matt, your city administrators' report.
Thank you, sir. A lot going on right now, I'll just say that, um so Pace, the solar project with KPP, we had an update meeting on that. Um, I, I attached sort of the outline sheet, this is the newest, latest and greatest design for that, it's uh still a one-megawatt facility. Footprint changed a little bit to accommodate the flood, floodplain, uh tentative timeline is late fall, uh and I think that that will. Probably go live sometime early in the spring, so. Uh we've talked to the farmer who farms out for us, we're gonna, we know we're gonna have to make some adjustments to that agreement with him. Uh but I think it'd be a good, could be a good project, uh I will say that KPP is gonna be, Brooke is gonna be here from KPP. I think the second meeting in July, uh we've got our finance scorecard thing, report, I don't think, they don't call it the scorecard anymore, something else. Um, but they do every year for us, and so she's gonna present that, she's also gonna talk about this Pace project, so. Um, but they do every year for us, and so she's gonna present that, she's also gonna talk about this Pace project, so. Uh, bowling alley, met with the H D C chair on that, working on a framework for, uh, Andrew's drafting us an agreement on that. Um, they want to transition this thing by August, uh, end of August, which was a little sooner than I thought, um. Hopefully we'll have time to do that. Uh, Dave and Edgar, Edgar and I met with Clint Seibel over there and kind of got an idea for the operations, I think I've got extensive notes on that, uh, and a, and a good start to an operations plan for that, and once we finish up with that Cal Ripken State Baseball Tournament, we should have a pretty good opportunity to sit down and really work that out. Uh, I followed up on our congressional appropriations request for our fire station project that is attached to the agriculture bill. Uh, it's working through committee, and the Lutner's staff person thought that they should know something by July eighth, so. Not our next meeting, but maybe the meeting after that, but I'll let you know if we get it, the first thing you'll hear, you know, chanting and celebration here, City Hall, probably all the way across town, so.
There's nobody noticed it.
Wonder what's going on, um. Midnight Housing, we've received confirmation that we are in fact in that process, um. Comment period ended on June seventh, final decision should be announced before the end of this month. Uh, feel like it's a very strong application, and we're just kind of waiting on that final decision, so, uh, optimistic there on that one. Uh, s- the city administrator evaluation, so this is a little bit different, and I know we've got a couple of people who've never done it before, um. So, how the process works is we have evaluations for everybody in June, uh, to be done by July, so all employees get those. Um, my evaluation is a little different, we send out a survey, uh, to all the employees, and they have an opportunity to respond to that anonymously. Um, and they can kind of comment on my performance and whatever they want to talk about, and they often do. Uh, and then I do a self-evaluation, and then we provide all that information to you guys, that you can do the evaluation. Uh, then we usually go into an executive session in July, sometime in July, and then, you know, we go, we go over all that information, so. Uh, they, employees have till the twenty-eighth, I think I've got sixteen of them right now, so that's pretty good, that's about what I thought. That's what we had last year, I think, too, so, I don't know if we'll get any more, but we'll see. Uh, but once I get that, I don't, I don't edit it, I don't do anything, I just send it off, um, so y'all get the full, unfiltered version of what they think. So, yeah, that's how that's gonna work, uh, I got the KPP bill attached there for you. Uh, we're a little bit higher than we were last year, energy costs are a little bit higher this year, we also have, uh, smaller U C A adjustment. Uh, that's positive of negative last year, and then we also have an average metering fee, um, which is something that's related to the system upgrades when they put in the new meter. I don't think this is a reoccurring fee for us, but it's something that we'll have to, to recoup, they recoup the cost of that meter that they put in for the back feed so that we have redundancy. Uh, you have the health insurance savings report, we had a good month, eight thousand in savings created to a fully funded plan, so as we're kind of rounding out this plan year, uh, we are at sixty thousand in savings, claim reserves about a hundred and twenty, so things are going well with that. Uh, some things that came in afterwards, budget, we're gonna start that full tilt on July two. Um, the way the calendar falls this year, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a little fast and furious, I think. Uh, we'll have to make a revenue neutral decision before the twentieth, so we'll actually have two meetings before we have to make that decision. I did receive, uh, the information we wait for from the county every year, they send us motor vehicle tax assessed valuation. Had great news on the assessed valuation, it went up one point eight million, about eight and eight point four percent, so, uh, our tax tax base is growing, which is a great thing. Um, you know, we're, we're kind of putting together some of those numbers right now on the expenditure side. Now that I have the revenue, we can put together the projections for all the things that we have with that, so. We'll be in pretty good shape, I think, to start July second, to talk about kind of priorities and where you want to go. Um, usually we start, we try to keep the tax level flat, and then we're within that range, so. Uh, be thinking about some things you would like to see potentially for that, for that budget process, it'll be new for a couple of people, so. You know, we, we may change it up, it just depends on how you want to do it, so. Uh, Adam Street, the votes party's onsite working there, we finished our work on the intersection water stuff last week. Uh, Votes is onsite, they are gonna be doing that intersection first, and they're evaluating that south block, they may try to pick that up on their first round. They have to pull off for another job, which we knew, uh, and then they'll come back in, in July and try to finish everything up. We're hoping that they'll be finished by August when school starts. That's what it's gonna be, uh, they have more time than that per contract. Um, Votes is usually pretty good about getting in and out, but we'll see. Um, consumer confidence report, everybody should have received, if you have a, a, an online account with us, you would have gotten an email. Karen figured that out, which is good for her, that's awesome, trying to figure that one out for a little while. Uh, you should have gotten a direct link to where you can go look at that, uh, if you are a paper bill customer, you would have gotten it mailed to you. Um, and so, or a link, with a notification.
A, it will be an insert in the next statement.
Insert in the next statement.
Going out next, end of next week, customers will have it by July one.
By July one, so, consumer confidence report is something that has to go out every year. Talks about water quality, uh, dirty violations, anything like that, so that's something that comes out. And then we did receive our dividend check for our liability and property casualty insurance. Uh, from EMC, this year it was thirteen thousand-ish.
Over thirteen thousand.
A little over thirteen thousand, normally it's twenty.
Over twenty thousand.
Twenty, twenty-two, twenty-five, uh, so apparently a rough year in the insurance world, not getting our, not getting our real dividend, you know, that's always been a selling point for them, that they pay us back, uh, this dividend every year. It's getting smaller, so I don't know that it's a huge selling point anymore, so, uh, something to think about when we go to renew in, in April. Is that something there? And that is all I had, sir.
Okay, any questions? Hearing none, we'll go to our final public comment opportunity, is there anyone online or in the room that would like to address the council?
Well, I look forward to getting less streetlight. Happens or not.
Okay. All right, hearing, is, is there any other public comment? Hearing none, we'll close our final public comment opportunity and move to council comments, and we'll start with Councilman By.
Uh, nothing tonight, sir.
Councilman McCarty?
Nothing, sir.
Councilman Wilkins?
Nothing, sir.
Councilman Jorgensen?
Nothing.
Okay, well, the mayor has something, and that's, uh, to invite everyone in the room and in across the city to the igloo for a big lu with big lu on July one. So put that on your calendars and come join us at the igloo for a big lu with big lu. They usually take a little, knock a little bit off the price of the big lu, and, uh, there's typically some fireworks when it gets dark, so looking forward to seeing everybody, uh, it's generally, uh, when they open at seven, I believe. But there's no, uh, no political speeches allowed, Blake, so.
You got it.
My daughter's social media for the igloo, so we'll make sure she gets the word out.
And I've got my daughter working on a, she's, she's been, uh, doing some T-shirt stuff, and so I got her working on a T-shirt design for, for that, for, for me, so, all right. Is there any other business that needs to come before the council? Hearing none, I could call this meeting adjourned, and thanks for allowing me to participate from a thousand or more miles away. So we'll see y'all back in Hillsborough on Thursday.
Safe travels, Lou.
Thanks, Lou.
All right, thanks.